Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Waterloo Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, I will read our mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So, the first item on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask if there's anyone here who wishes to address the board to come forward and state your name and address. Can't imagine why no one would want to be here on a snowy night in January. All right, then seeing none, we will move on to Item A, which is on page one. This is the Board's celebration. This is a donation from the Waterloo Schools Foundation, and I will ask their Executive Director Emily Hansen to come forward, and I think Tara is live streaming as we go. So, good evening Emily, welcome.
Thank you guys so much for having me today. Like Shanley said, my name is Emily Hansen, and I have the pleasure of being the Executive Director of the Waterloo Schools Foundation. So, we are a nonprofit that raises money for the Waterloo Schools. We've been around 10 years now and given out, I just looked it up, almost $2 million to the district. Historically, what we funded are teacher grants and student grants, but this year because of COVID-19, we've really pivoted to focus on what are the needs in the district right now and how can we best serve our schools and our teachers. So, we raised over $120,000 for COVID relief specifically, which is what we are gifting to the district today. $65,000 or 65 of that is in technology, so we are working to fund some Chromebooks that you guys will be able to hand out to students. And then, we also did $60,000 for building level expenses. So, we actually went through and tried to equitably figure out what would make sense for each school to have allocated so they could buy extra disinfecting wipes, face masks, supplies. We really left it and have been leaving it up to the principals, lead teachers, and secretaries so that it can be what makes the most sense for their schools. And we've had some really interesting requests from some schools so far, and thankfully, our donors are very flexible too, so we're trying to make it so that it's whatever really fits their needs right now.
Emily, will you forgive me? I want to put the motion on the table before we move to questions. You were so good to get up there so quickly that I didn't even get our motion on the table, which is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges with gratitude the donation of $125,000 from the Waterloo Schools Foundation for COVID relief for the Waterloo Schools.
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy and Aster, second. And now, for discussion, now that Emily's already started, I'm sorry.
Yep, so are there any questions for me about that?
Do you perceive this just to be a one-year thing and revert back to the teacher and student grants?
You know, I don't know how to answer that question right now, just because we don't know what COVID will look like, I guess, for the district moving forward. Our board has been having lots of conversations about how can we best support the district, and so I would say if there are things that you guys as school board members too think that would be bigger needs for the district moving forward, they're definitely willing to look at different options. But as of right now, we're planning to go back, I guess, to what we had before.
I guess my personal observation is those teacher and student grants were really, really valuable, and I guess my first choice would be for you to continue to
Yeah.
to fund those because, you know, when you look at the displays and talk to the students, there's so many of them involved in so many different things that they probably wouldn't be if it weren't for your grants. So, anyway, I think
I think that that's a hope. It's just, we had a long conversation about it as a board this year and felt like it might not be necessarily fair to ask teachers to do things that were above and beyond what they were doing when there was so much uncertainty going on as well.
I agree, Lyle. When I first started doing Lego League with my kid, the one who's 20 now, 21, oh my god, 21 in a few days, when he was nine, so the foundation throughout the years made a lot of that possible. There's no way that we could have funded those things. So, yes, keeping that going makes a lot of programs available that otherwise wouldn't be.
That's our feedback, at least.
But, and I would just take back to your board members that I really appreciate their flexibility and willingness to entertain this idea of doing maybe a COVID special year or something because, I mean, you know, they could have said, "No, we just want it to go for that," and it almost would be impossible to have, you know, those special things when we, especially with kids, you know, and the distancing and virtual learning and, you know, all the parameters that are going around that. I just appreciate that they decided to let it go to COVID this year and just their flexibility and willing to help in whatever way they can. So, please express that too. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And also, to everybody who gets the envelopes in the mail to donate and who's done so, thank you. I love getting them. Not the donations, that too, but I mean the envelopes, so.
And Board, you should know that both Dr. Lindeman and I attend, we are non-voting, we're ex-officio members of the Foundation Board, so we certainly can take feedback to them as well, so, and we will do so. Not that Emily can't deliver that, but you got a couple other ears that are going that way, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate your guys' partnership with that too. I think it makes it so that when we raise money, I never question that it's going to be going towards the greater good for the district as well. I like to think that my board members are really flexible and open to all sorts of feedback as well, but because of the relationship that we have with Shanley and Dr. Lindeman, I really think that it is always going towards the greatest need, which our donors really like to hear as well. So, thank you for letting them be ex-officio members on our board.
How long have you done this, Emily?
I've been here almost six years.
Well, I'm glad to finally meet you. I see your name on all kinds of stuff, so it's great to meet you.
COVID makes it hard, doesn't it?
It does.
Well, Emily, we appreciate this very much, and obviously, you know, I would invite other board members too, you know, that when they meet sometimes you can always, you can come with me to a board meeting, maybe once we're back in person, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, you guys are always welcome.
Yeah, so.
Shanley, just to add a little caveat too, we typically do not, by board policy, do not need to approve donations from the Foundation, but we just were super excited to have Emily come tonight and talk about this because it is a little bit out of the ordinary, so thank you for doing that.
Like I said, I got so excited I forgot to read the motion, so there you go.
Well, thank you guys for having me.
And the Chromebooks, where did those go, do you know?
That is a question for Matt.
For Matt, okay.
Most, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
The 612 were already one-to-one, but when we went sort of one-to-one for the elementary in such a short amount of turnaround time, they
Kind of filled in some gaps.
It filled in some funding gaps.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, if there's not anything further for Emily, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Oh, we already did that. Yes, okay, so then all those in favor of accepting the $125,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you both very much again, we appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of three items this evening, the minutes of the January 11th, 2021 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, and bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item D.
Item D. Then can I have a motion to place Items B and C on the table, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Sue.
Second.
And a second with Aster. And all those in favor then of approving those two items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Item D, which is on page eight, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved.
Thanks, I'm going to go with Aster and a second from Sue. And discussion.
I'll be abstaining.
Oh, okay.
I'll try to catch when my name is on there.
I know, I get you. Last week I had, or last meeting I had to do the same thing, so.
I think I need to too.
Okay.
If we still got enough?
Four, yes we do.
Okay.
Yes. All right, so all those in favor of approving Item D, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye with two in abstention. Thank you. Thank you both for letting me know ahead of time, appreciate it, so.
I don't always catch it, but I try to.
That's all right. Thank you for doing so. All right, the next item on our agenda is Item E. This is on page 17, it's the Internet Service for the Waterloo Community Schools, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the three-year, 5 gigabyte per second Internet service proposal from Unite Private Networks and sign the applicable agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue and Jesse, a second. And discussion, I see we have Matt O'Brien, our Executive Director of Technology here to answer some questions and put this out for us. Welcome.
Good evening. I think the board is aware, but briefly for anyone that may be watching at home, there's a federal program called E-Rate which allows schools to apply for funding to help with Internet access. So, anytime that we go out for bid for Internet service, we always do within the E-Rate program and be sure to follow all the rules of the E-Rate program so that we're eligible to apply for funding to help with that. So, the district currently has two Internet service providers. We have service with Arion, which is a 5-gigabit circuit, and we have a 3-gigabit circuit with MediaCom, and that contract is up at the end of this fiscal year. So, this service that's before you is to replace that MediaCom service that is up at the end of this year. So, we're recommending that we replace that 3-gigabit service with the 5-gigabit contract with Unite Private Networks, which is before you tonight.
So, the district asks for a cost of service between 5 and 10. You're currently at 3 with both contracts, or do you have 5 with another supplier?
So, we're at 3 with one and 5 with another, so we're moving from basically 8 to 10, from 3 plus 5 to 5 plus 5 will be if the board accepts this.
Are additive?
So, there's a 3-gigabit circuit which is due at the end of this fiscal year, so that one is going away and will be replaced with this recommended 5-gigabit circuit.
Yeah.
And then we have another continuing contract with Arion, which is for 5 gigabits as well. So, right now, we're at 3 plus 5 is 8. The recommendation would be 5 plus 5 is 10.
So, is there value in going to 10, or doesn't this company offer 10?
They do. There were actually all of the bids, with the exception of NextLink, but MediaCom and Unite Private Networks, UPN, both bid 10. We didn't go with 10 for really two reasons. One is right now, we're not near our capacity for 8.
Okay.
The second is that Arion contract will be coming up the following year, so if for some reason we had some drastic raise in need at that point, then we could always adjust it with greater bandwidth at that point. So, while we're locked in for three years, we're not necessarily locked into that speed because of those alternating contracts.
So, what would be the first thing that's affected by lack of speed?
Well, honest, so, there's a couple of components that go into how fast things load on your computer or your Chromebook or something of that nature. There's the Internet service, which is what we're talking about, but then there's some other pieces as well. There's the firewall, and there's also then the network infrastructure, which we'll actually talk about in the next exhibit. So, all three of those play a role into making sure that there's not what's called latency or basically just slowness on student or staff devices. So, we like to make sure that we're ahead of the curve in all three of those areas so that we're not experiencing problems. That's not to say there's not an occasional malfunction or, you know, issue or things of that nature, but overall, we want to make sure our capacity is ahead of our actual needs in all three of those areas.
Basically speaking, we have instantaneous response.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
We're close to it, yep.
Anything further for Matt?
So, is this, is the E-Rate already awarded, or do you have to apply for that?
No, so I need your approval first, and then I can actually apply for it. So, that's basically my homework, assuming you all approve this, is a lot of paperwork to proceed with those applications.
Okay.
Thanks upfront for that, we appreciate it. Makes a big difference.
It does, it does.
Makes a huge difference.
90%?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
When I went to visit Matt, he said, he's like, "I'm very frugal." I'm like, "You're in the right position."
Yes, he is, so.
Yeah, we appreciate all your
Yes.
work on that.
Your diligence.
Especially filling out the paperwork, I'm sure that's the favorite part of your job.
I will say that is not one of my highlights, but I'm good at dotting i's and crossing t's, so thus far, thus far, we've been fairly successful.
That has value.
Yes, it does. All right, Matt, thank you. Then all those in favor of approving the Internet service for the schools, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item F, which is on page 33, and you get to hear me read this all again. Yee-haw! All right, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of network equipment from Goldfield Telecom LC at a total cost of $94,543.51. The purchase of network SFPs from Heartland Business Systems at a total cost of $11,466.41. And wireless access points from Aircore Wireless at a total cost of $57,768.10.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. And discussion. If I mispronounce any of those companies, you gotta let me know.
No, I think you did good.
All right, thanks.
So, we actually alluded to this earlier, there's another part to the E-Rate program which allows us to apply for funding to assist with network infrastructure. So, all three of the bids before you tonight are network infrastructure. There's the actual physical networks, they're called switches, so it's basically what all of the cables plug into, so access points plug into switches, it's what all of our kind of network infrastructure is based off of. There's also the wireless access points themselves, and then SFPs are kind of the modules, or they're called transceivers, which transmit the high-speed fiber optic cable. So, basically between different parts of the building or between different parts, different schools, the SFPs is what the fiber actually plugs into and it transmits light, which then those little modules interpret. So, three critical parts of our network. So, every year, those that have been on the board for a while, you're probably used to us taking some sort of network upgrades to you, we kind of stagger that, and there's some rules with E-Rate and maximum funding that we're allowed to apply for that we obviously always make sure that we're aligning our long-term and medium-term plans towards. So, the proposal in front of you tonight is actually primarily for the new Lowell, most, not most, but a good chunk of this equipment is actually for the new Lowell Elementary, and then we have several other schools which are receiving various parts, but Lowell is kind of the whole network is kind of part of this proposal, and then a handful of other schools are getting particular parts of their network upgraded as part of the proposal in front of you.
So, is the money coming from the Lowell project cost, or?
Yeah, so we'll, our portion will actually likely itemize that out, so we have general tech funds that'll go towards our normal infrastructure replacements, and then yes, typically our cost for the new building comes as part of those saved dollars that pay for the new construction.
But none of this is going to, is it premature to have to start purchasing for the Central remodel or the WCC expansion?
So, any future remodels that we would look at, we would want to align with the E-Rate year, we've got plenty of time still to look at those proposals. The E-Rate cycle kind of works that we take it to your approval now, so I can then file the paperwork. Generally, we get funded or approval notice, assuming we do get an approval notice, anywhere between the spring and the fall. So, with the Lowell timeline, that obviously works out fairly well, that then we would be able to get that equipment ordered. Usually, that takes place in the fall, though depending on how long that approval notice takes place, we may end up ordering this, at least the Lowell equipment, ahead of when we get that notice, just because we obviously want to make sure that we have that equipment in time to get that installed for the building to open.
This particular COVID will not go to Central or?
Correct, correct. This is Lowell, is the predominant building plus a handful of other schools, but none of that's going to Central or WCC.
Matt, I was just wondering, as far as like on the bids, it was very interesting when I was looking through those, it seemed like, well, obviously in the equipment specified, you know, two were very comparable in price, and then two were almost double in price. And just wondering how in, how that is possible, and then second question is, you know, having all these different, different companies, I guess, you know, with all these different names, is there any problem, do things work better together with certain other entities? Or, you know, like the cohesiveness of different companies, is there anything we ever have to worry about that?
Yeah, so, two good questions. For the disparity in the bids, were you looking at wireless or the SFPs, because they both have a little bit of a spread?
Yeah, I guess I was looking at the wireless, actually.
Sure.
You know, I mean, all of it, but that was really subtle.
Yeah, there's a, so I ask because there's a couple different reasons. So, wireless, quite honestly, manufacturers typical have, typically have preferred resellers, and I'm not a huge fan of the way that this happens, but the net result is they end up giving a lot bigger discount to one reseller than they would another reseller. So, then obviously those margins are passed down, and that's kind of the spread that you see before you. Aircore has been, is one of, Aruba, which is now owned by HP, one of their preferred partners, and they were the first ones to have kind of our contract, and now Aruba always gives them kind of preferred pricing to some of the other vendors, which is just the way that quite a few companies just play that out. The SFPs, there's also a significant spread within those, and with that, I would kind of equate that to generic versus name brand. So, with SFPs, I mean, if you think of like even prescription drugs or something, you know, a store brand versus whatnot, it's really the same premise. It's really the same active ingredient, so to speak, between the ones that say compatible, but it's not actually made by Ruckus, which is the equipment that it's going in, versus some of those that were bid, kind of the OEM or the actual equipment manufacturer, those are a little bit more expensive because it's just you're paying for the name brand. They both work the same, and we've always used compatible and not had problems in the past.
I do appreciate also the way that you evaluate the bids so that it's not just going for the lowest
Yeah.
dollar, you know, that you're making sure.
And that, I appreciate you saying that, and that actually, I think, goes to Sue's second question, which is kind of the mixing of different technologies and how that works, and you'll find that actually factored in our bid evaluation. So, for example, wireless, which you were looking at, there were several companies which bid, which bid our Aruba wireless, but then there was also one that bill, that bid Fortinet, which was actually the little bid. That just would not have worked. There's a number of reasons why we weren't a huge fan of that bid, but the biggest is just that compatibility piece, because like I said, at Lowell, we're replacing the whole network, but in several other cases, we're just upgrading parts of that network, and while that's technically possible to have, you know, two different access point brands that then communicate entirely differently because Aruba basically communicates with our controller at our data center, the Fortinet would actually end up communicating with our firewall because it's a Fortinet firewall, so it would actually be two different lines of communication. It's technically possible, but it definitely is opening the door for problems and just would not make sense.
Yeah, it just, it would be odd trying to keep your As and your Bs and your Cs separate to from building to building.
Yep, for sure. In technology, you want to try to minimize complexity whenever possible, so this is a good case where, you know, if we were talking about an enormous spread between the two, then it would be a different conversation. Obviously, that would be reflected in the bid evaluation, but you know, with a relatively minor spread, it just did not make sense to increase complexity.
Thank you. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, anything further for Matt then on the equipment purchase? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the network equipment purchase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to our last thing, don't go anywhere, Matt. The network cabling project, which is Item G, and this is on page 50, and the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approves the contract for fiber optic and structured network cabling work to be completed by Van Manen Technology for a total cost of $38,585, subject to being approved for E-Rate funding to offset up to $32,797.25 of these costs.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sue and Jesse. And discussion.
So, this is the final piece of E-Rate that E-Rate can pay for, or that we're seeking E-Rate funds for, which is the actual cabling itself. So, structured network cabling refers to like phones or access points, it's basically copper cabling that those devices plug into, and fiber optic cable, as we discussed previously, that's the cable that either connects our buildings or within our buildings connects the main closet or the main distribution center where the fiber comes into the building and the main equipment is at, with other switches within the building as well. So, this is renewing some of that cabling, either for wireless access point purposes or for new fiber purposes to run at a faster speed at Pointer, Carver, and Bunker.
Would it have been advantageous to put Lowell stuff in here or not?
That would have been really, really complicated, mainly because there's a big advantage to actually having, when you're having a complex project such as Lowell, having the actual installation be part of the master contract, so to try to do that as a separate contract and have a separate contractor then coordinate with the master contractor, that gets, that gets really complicated, so we haven't bid it that way in the past.
Thank you.
There's a comment in here, says some of this fiber optic cable is of the older standard, which is not capable of running faster speeds, so there's been a change in the fiber cable itself?
There has, so I'll turn out to get too technical, but there's actually two different kinds of fiber optic cable. There's single mode and multi-mode, which again, I won't get too technical, but single mode is generally for longer distances, but we're finding that more and more used within shorter distances as well. Multi-mode is for shorter distances. Both of those, though, have subs standards, so there's different types of single mode cable, there's different types of multi-mode cable, and those standards have kind of evolved through the years. So, the older standards that, for example, were even around when Pointer was opened, I think, what, back in 2008-ish, somewhere in there, that's no longer the standard, and that standard is not capable at running at the faster speeds at the distance that we need it to run at. So, it's kind of a combination of the standard and the distance, and the fiber optic cable there is basically for the lengths that we're needing to go even within the building will not run at 10 gigs per second, which is what we're upgrading our network to, it'll only run at a gig.
So, is the old fiber, is it in conduit? Can that be replaced with newer?
Yeah, so it's in a combination of, most of it is just in raceway above the ceiling because it's a drop ceiling, so it's just cable tray that it's running along. So, yeah, the contractors will use that same cable tray. For example, Bunker's obviously a different building, so that building had cabling retrofit, so there it's kind of more of a combination of either mounted to the top of the ceiling, there's less cable tray, but either way, they're going to take the same paths and use the same cabling supports to put that fiber in place. But either way, they're going to take the same paths and use the same cabling supports to, to put that fiber in place.
If I'm reading this, so fiber's just going to the main distribution frame, right?
It's running from the MDF to what are called IDF, which are basically the sub-closets. So for example, if you look at Bunker, they have an MDF, which is where the fiber comes in. So the signal comes in from the rest of the district's network. And then from there, they have two IDF that then serve different parts of the building. So depending on where you're at, those copper cables run to either the MDF or one of the two IDF. So the fiber then is, is connecting the MDF to the IDF. Same story at, at the other schools as well.
So the other schools, when it says room, it doesn't, you know, talking about like it's going to just the specific teacher? It's just that's where your space is, correct?
Generally, some of our schools actually, you, you would think that. Carver and, the reason why we say that for Carver and Pointer is Carver and Pointer were designed with each room actually having a switch in the room that serves that room, which was a neat idea at the time, keep in mind, that was a decade ago. But what we're finding now is that actually doesn't make sense because the vast, that was at a time where most things were wired, right? So the idea was that there would be flexibility by having a switch in the room and then you could just run more, you know, cabling right to that switch. We're now at a point where everything, not everything, but the vast majority of, of connections are wireless. Wireless to connect at the faster speeds that we're trying to upgrade our network to. There's some different parameters, but the actual switches are much more expensive. They run louder, so they're not, you know, huge fans for classroom, teachers aren't huge fans of them because they're just a little louder. So we're basically consolidating that. That's why we're actually running at Pointer and Carver additional cabling. Because right now, there is cabling for the wireless access points, but we're actually going to run that back to more consolidated points. So there's, we're basically creating kind of one per each wing where all the access points will plug into.
And Matt, just to clarify, I read that most of this work's going to happen either over the summer when students are in the building or after school hours. And when you said that about being loud, I'm not, not that fiber itself is loud.
Correct. The work.
The work could be so, okay.
Correct, yep. And that's actually written into the contract that they have to basically work around our schedule. So we're hoping we get approval in time for the summer, that a lot of it can take place over the summer. But if not, then they'll either do it on professional development days or after hours.
Okay, great.
So have the access points themselves gradually become more powerful and have a broader range and a higher capacity?
Yeah, I would say that it's more about power and capacity than range. Range is more determined, yeah, that, range is kind of determined by antennas and things of that nature, which there hasn't necessarily been a huge evolution with that. But the access points themselves and how they process things and the standard that they process things. So if you've heard of like 802.11N or 802.11AC, those are different wireless standards. So if you had like a five-year-old wireless router in your house, it was probably a, you know, an 802.11N. And then it's evolved to AC and then it's evolved to AX. So that's basically the frequency that they're operating on, which then equates to the maximum speed that the connections between the computer or the Chromebook or whatever device to the actual access point can operate on.
So a single access point will, for the most part, serve a single classroom?
Yeah, that's the model that we're really at, which is kind of the standard model from a density perspective. It can, you know, a standard single access point could maybe go up to 50 devices, maybe 100. But as you keep growing up, there's, there's a hard limitation. But as you even approach that hard limitation, things start getting slower and slower. The way wireless works is your, your connection is kind of only as fast as the slowest device. So we try to segment that per each room. And I very much oversimplified some concepts there. But that's, that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that we actually have enough access points to serve our capacity.
So are we bumping up against that limitation anywhere?
I wouldn't say we're bumping up. I would say kind of what I said before, that we're trying to stay ahead of our capacity needs. So all of our planning we're doing is trying to look at what we need right now. So I would say nothing before you right now is an emergency, but we also don't want it ever to be an emergency to, to make those upgrades.
Okay. And then Matt, I just wondered, with the wording of the recommendation, as far in, as, you know, the technology company at the cost, subject to being approved for E-Rate funding, do they deny certain technology companies? I mean, would we have to worry about something like that or?
There are, it's less about the company and it's more about just the application itself and whether there's funding available and whether they approve your application. So any of the vendors that we're recommending, we've already vetted that they're an approved E-Rate vendor. So it won't be, it wouldn't be denied because of that. But there's definitely been lots of districts that have had various applications denied. So I usually put some sort of language within there where if we can wait on a project, you know, we're not going to proceed unless we actually do get the funding. Because if for some reason we are denied, it would make sense to maybe postpone that for a year, try again next year and then move forward next year. I didn't put that language in the equipment motion because we knew we needed to move forward with Lowell no matter what.
Okay, perfect. That makes sense. Cause I just didn't, I wondered if the companies had to, like you say, be E-Rate approved? And then why would we go with a company that isn't E-Rate approved?
And the answer is yes, and we do only go with E-Rate approved.
Perfect, thank you.
How often do you not get it though?
Knock on wood, we've been really successful here. But there's been, there's been lots of other cases where for various reasons, either technicalities or just lack of funding. There's been various reasons where other districts have, have not gotten funding. So we, we just try to keep our options open and be on the safe side.
We're leaving it to you to dot the i's and cross the t's. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks for all your hard work, Matt.
Yeah, you bet.
And for all your explanations, we really appreciate it, now that I've had you up there for 300 hours.
Well, you make technology seem so much easier, the way you say it. So you're good at that.
Glad to hear that.
Very good at it.
I just think of like plugging my, you know, generic charger into my phone. It doesn't work as well if I use a product from that company. So that's, you know, you made it seem so easy.
That works, that's a good analogy.
You're sure it's not the other way around, that it's really easy and he's making it sound?
I'll leave that to you to decide.
Right. You can hand all that paperwork for the e-filing to Lyle to work on.
I'll meet with you.
You can be your approval reader.
I'll, I'll just send a file cabinet over to your.
Lyle likes to dot i's and cross t's.
I, I actually think Lyle would probably be good at that.
All right, thank you. Then all those in favor of approving the network cabling project, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thanks.
That takes us then, thanks again, Matt, we appreciate it. Takes us to item H, which is on page 56. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the following policies, child abuse reporting and teacher dismissal. Thank you, Jesse, and a second?
Second.
And Sue. And Tara Thomas is here this evening to walk us through, I know we saw these last month, last two weeks ago, so.
Thank you, yes, happy to answer any questions or find an answer if I don't have it.
I just have a comment on the teacher dismissal. I mean, this makes it seem like it's pretty easy. And being part of that in the past, it's not an easy thing. So, just saying.
Thanks, Sue. Duly noted.
But it is nice to be, for me at least, to be able to read it and understand. But yes, the, actually doing it's very different.
Better language, so, okay. Then all those in favor of approving the two policies, 402.2 and 401.5.1, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Tara. That concludes our action items for tonight. So I will move on then to item I, which is on page 59. And this is our return to learn board update for this evening. And you all have this at your spot, as well as there was some information that was emailed out to us. Pretty much the same stuff, I think, maybe a few different, maybe a few edits since then, but. And Dr. Mulhorn is coming forward. So I'll let you hit the highlights and then I'm sure the board will ask some questions, yeah.
And Dr. Botchway can help me as well on some of, on some of it, the, the transition and the facility update. My main part is the virtual learning. And you can read, I won't read it to you. I will say, we have had, in the past, we've had a little, a few bumps, but it has changed dramatically. As you know, there's a parent Facebook page that now Angelie Meyer monitors. She has taken over that. And the, the comments and responses that we are getting from parents has improved greatly. We will not be perfect, we'll never be perfect. But is, but the comments, the sentiments have been, have been much, much more positive. If you notice on here, we started in September with about 2,800 students on virtual. We are now at about 1,500 virtual, uh, virtual students. And what that is allowed to do is what we've been talking about. It's allowed to have smaller classes. We are doing some live lessons. Kids are getting to work with their teachers more. They are getting art, music, PE, counseling lessons. So a lot more engaging and different material, extra material, which has been something that the parents have asked for. And we are able to make those accommodations now that we are down to smaller classes.
Stephanie, at one time, I think it was, you know, it was anywhere between, some teachers had as many as 75. Would you say we're down to, are they down to like under 50? Can you just give me a range?
It range, it's, there's a, still a pretty big range. I think one class has 70.
Okay.
And one is down to like 35. But we're also working to make some adjustments to still even those out even further.
Great, thank you.
I just wondered, what is Khan Kids?
It's a offshoot of like Khan Academy, offering some more, some more material for kids to engage in.
Mostly math?
A lot of math.
So this 30 minutes, each virtual teacher's teaching at least one 30-minute lesson per week. So that's per week, that's, that's available for students at home? In real time or can they just log in anytime and see it?
Both. They do it in real time. So for example, if I'm a kindergarten teacher, I may say at 10 o'clock on Mondays, I will do the real-time lesson, but it'll also be recorded so that they can watch it if they can't do it at that time.
Good.
Or they could refer back to it if they were, right, so, you know.
They could do both, yeah.
I think that's a big step forward. And how does that then mesh with the edgenuity, learning that they, these same students are really under edgenuity?
They are under edgenuity, but we're offering extra, I mean, on top of edgenuity, we're doing that, making sure that we're getting the fine arts mainly. We're doing a PE lesson, a PE art, music, media and counseling. So five, five additional lessons.
Oh, so we're not teaching any, there's no core subjects in this 30-minute lesson?
Not yet. That's what Brian Christopherson is still working on.
Well, on that, on, am I reading this incorrectly? So starting the week of January 18th, we began offering one face-to-face math lesson and one face-to-face?
Yes, that was last week, not, okay.
So it is starting, it is starting.
Just last week, just last week.
The other lessons had started back in November.
Yep, those did.
And so now they're adding core reading, math in addition to the other lessons. So there's actually quite a few that they can get real-time or recorded in addition to.
So can they log on to the edgenuity lessons at any time?
They can, yes.
And they can?
They've always been able to do that for the edgenuity, yeah.
And then go back and look at them again if they need to.
And now, as far as the edgenuity, are we getting more positive feedback, the return time from them? You know, updates, things have kind of gotten a lot better with that?
For about, Jane would be about eight weeks, we met with them weekly, with the edgenuity people. And we were giving them feedback, giving them screenshots, giving them parent complaints and saying, here are the things that we really need shorted up. And I will say, after about six weeks in, it improved tremendously, tremendously.
Is that mostly in the elementary or all levels?
The elementary. We had a few bumps secondary, but we didn't have as many, nearly as many at the secondary as we were having at the elementary. But that we are still giving them feedback at all levels. But it was mainly at the elementary that we really gave them the feedback that they needed to short things up.
How well's the edgenuity aligned through the assessments, the state assessment stuff?
Well, we will see in, in April. We will, we'll definitely see in April. And we're working on how, how, what will assessments look like? Cause we do have to assess our kids, give them the ISAS tests in April. And so we're working right now on what's that going to look like for our kids who are 100% virtual versus our kids who are 100% face-to-face.
Do we know yet, is that ISAS test going to be as it was, not in 2020, but in 2019, it was virtual? I mean, it was, it was online.
Yes, yes.
So at least that piece of it, it doesn't, it isn't a test that has to be administered live. Is that correct?
No, they are, the state is working on an alternate test so that there's a face-to-face version, face-to-face, and a version that we will do.
Okay.
Yep, for virtual.
Thank you.
The feedback that you're receiving on the Facebook page or, or any information that you're receiving from parents, or is that a direct correlation to, to the relationship that you guys have with the ingenuity? Are you seeing that from different places as well?
I think it's the direct relationship we have with ingenuity and just checking in with them so often. Every time there's something wrong, they have been very open about, if you see something, let us know right now so we can get it in and that it can get fixed immediately.
You don't think parents are inhibited at all, that there's a staff member on there?
Inhibi, the feed, I don't think so. I don't think.
I don't go on, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Nope, I don't think so. I think she has been very open to, we want to know the issues. We can't fix them if we don't know, if we don't know. And so she's been very.
And they're pretty blunt.
Yeah, yep. And that's, which is okay, I mean, which is okay, that's what we want. We can't, we can't change what we don't know about, so that's okay.
I'm sorry, I asked.
No, that's okay.
So most of their concerns that you've seen were because of the ingenuity?
It was, it was, yep.
That and teacher time was the other one too. And both of those have, we've worked really, really hard to resolve both of those to some level of.
So I'm assuming we're not the only district using edgenuity?
No.
So what's going on with these other districts? Is ingenuity meeting daily or weekly with them too? Or are they just shrugging and saying it's okay product?
I'm actually not sure about that. I know there are, there are a lot of districts across the state that are using that. As we had said before, middle school and high school, we had really quite, quite a lot of experience with using edgenuity. It was really elementary that we scaled up and that they scaled up very quickly. So I'm not really sure. I know that when we worked with parents, we just knew that we needed that turnaround time to be really quickly, quick. And so our team, I mean, Stephanie, you can talk about the, the meetings that you have weekly with them, but.
But it sounds like it wasn't really a fully developed product that they rolled out. And, you know, we're helping them refine it. But I would think other districts would have been just as dissatisfied as we've been with it.
From what I've heard with my UEN meetings, that is, that is correct. But to be honest, I'm just worried about us and making sure our kids get what they need. So that's what, that's what my focus is and they've been very responsive to us.
Is edgenuity a nationwide organization? So, I mean, so they've done elementary before, like this isn't like their first rodeo.
Nope.
Okay.
But I, I think you do have to allow grace because it was thrown in. Everybody was thrown into this, even companies. And I understand you're paying for a service and you want to get top-notch service. I get that completely, but this was a new ballpark for everybody, even though they had used the, you know, the product in other situations. But to do it fully virtual in lots of communities and not at the elementary level, I don't think they would ever, probably would have said that was their expertise because most people would never think elementary as a full, fully virtual option versus a high school student would be as effective.
Well, there's, homeschool kids would have used it, wouldn't they? I mean, isn't that what some?
Not homeschool, no.
So it's only done through public?
We did have some upper virtual, our virtual students in upper grades did use it, but we actually did not use it for the younger ones prior to this experience.
I don't mean here, I meant.
Oh.
Cause like Sue said that they never did it.
I don't know if they ever did. It, it really was, it was used in limited scale, I would say. Very limited scale. It was, it definitely was not used in the manner that districts needed them to, to deliver when COVID hit. I would, I, they just weren't. And it, and it really could be, it's not that we didn't look at it. Stephanie, your team really worked hard on it, but it might have been a little bit of. it might have been a little bit of over-promising and under-delivering, um, because we really did feel comfortable, we would not have chosen it had we not felt comfortable with it, but when it really got into it, we had a lot to, to scale up, and, and of course, we were scaling up, you know, twenty other things at the same time that we were scaling up the elementary edgenuity, so it was not something I would really want to redo. That experience was, was tough, but I am, you know, I, we are getting a lot better, um, a lot better feedback and comments over time, so.
No, I, I don't think anyone was at fault, it's just, I know what it felt like, yeah, as parents, I know that there was a lot of frustrated tears and stuff.
And, and staff too, I mean, it was, there was frustration all across the board.
Yeah, I'm, I know edgenuity works really well, like with PBDA, cause there's some oversight, and so, um, this is just one more tool now that we've honed and we can use going forward. Um, I just had one other question, so it, um, it says that each teacher is teaching at least one thirty-minute lesson per week. So that's for everyone that's in there, like, if you have seventy kids, they're just doing this one lesson for all seventy?
So it depends on the grade level, so Ryan Christopherson, who works with elementary curriculum, he has divided the teachers, and so you might teach all of the kindergarten kids, no matter where they are virtually in school at.
Yep.
So they might teach there, you might, Jane might teach all the Lincoln kids, so that's how they're separated, it's just, it's by grade level, doesn't matter the building that, exactly that they attend.
Right, I, I just mean, is that, is that enough, you think, to just do the one a week, or are they just really busy trying to do the day-to-day following up?
We're still trying to scale up, that's the minimum, but Ryan, I will say, has, oh, he has worked, I can't even tell you how much, how much he's worked, and he is continuing to add and to add, I mean, that, we are where we're at because of him, he's really.
I'm sorry, I didn't wanna put more on those poor virtual teachers, cause I know what they were doing.
Yep, absolutely.
But if we were able to lower the numbers, it would be great.
And that, yes, and that is what we're able to do, yep.
Thank you, Steph.
Yeah, no problem.
So is there a library of these, uh, lesson plans? I mean, they're doing them once a week, eventually there's a whole library that's been developed, and you can, should be able to just plug in a different, different population of kids that, that need that particular lesson, are we?
I believe that they're, I believe that Ryan, um, and his team are sharing, are keeping them in a shared drive that, um, parents will have access to. So a drive that has all the kindergarten lessons, all that, so they can watch them multiple times.
If the parents know they're available.
Right, which Ryan has communicated and communicated with the virtual teachers, he meets with the virtual teachers once a week. And so he is in constant communication with, with the virtual teachers.
And there's a place where they're archiving those other lessons as well, the, the counseling lessons, the, um, music lessons, PE lessons, all of those are archived, so they can go in and access all of those when they're ready.
But can teachers like share, I think that's kind of what we're.
They are sharing.
Oh, cool, okay.
And these are, these are lessons that are done, uh, without students?
Yes.
Are, what are the live lessons that they're doing?
Well, the live lessons are, like, they're logged, they're logged on, but then they're just recorded, and so they might, they're not recording, they're recording themselves without kids when they do it, but when they're live, they have whoever logs on, as far as kids.
So would those students' pictures be on the screen too, or no?
No, nope, that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to avoid, that's why they have to do it twice.
Speaker only, basically, yeah.
That's what we're.
Yep.
So what is, um, what is the engagement rate looking like now, now that we're down from what, twenty-eight hundred to fifteen sixty-six? Are, are you, the kids that are still doing virtual staying pretty, are they logging in, are they staying on top of stuff?
I will say, overall, as a generality, no, we're still having trouble and still working to, to get, to get kids and families engaged. We're, we're still working really hard to try to get that.
Is, any of the summer school program is only gonna be in building, or we're gonna have virtual summer schooling as well?
Working on that?
Definitely working on that and having that, definitely.
As soon as we have summer school info, you know we all wanna push that out.
Absolutely.
I've already been asked a bunch.
But there must be a hierarchy, I mean, there's fifteen percent of the students that are now on virtual. Of those fifteen percent, uh, I'm sure there's graduations in how successful they are, some of them. What, what percent are, would you consider really successful?
I don't, I would say, yeah, you're right, we could, I mean, we could qualify, I would say there are half of them who are being successful at some level, and there are, you know, five to seven percent that are not logging in like they need to, to, to stay, to keep pace, I guess is how I would say.
So will that option be something that can't continue then?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're really working on, and I've shared that with the, the board too, that, you know, we, the question we had was, would we continue virtual for the rest of the year, and that was actually asked, I believe it was Director Johnson who asked that at the last meeting, and my, you know, my, my comment was, you know, I wasn't prepared at that time to, to mention that, you know, our intent is that we do want to provide that option for, for students, however, if it's not working and it's not successful for some, we are, we're having conversations, it would, you know, it would look like, if I were calling you, I'd say, Stacy, hey, I wanna talk with you about your kids not logging in, which is not true. Not true, but I'm just using that as an example, if you're calling a parent and you're just saying, hey, we really need to talk about, you know, and when the parent says, I, I would prefer them to stay virtual, then we really do need them to do what they need to do, so those are conversations that we're having.
So this seven or eight percent, or whatever it is, of the students that really are, are falling behind, uh, are those the ones we're trying to get into summer school?
They're the ones we're trying to get back in school right now.
Back in school, and, I mean, to be successful in the next grade, they're gonna have to.
We know.
Know a certain amount of, yep.
Things are, everything will be over their head, you know?
I don't really feel like we can wait until summer school to have students engage. Some students that are back now, really, you know, if you think of March thirteenth being our last day of school last year, some of the students really had done very little for ten months. It's just, I mean, that's just, it's just an incredible, um, barrier to learning, those are, those are hard to, to make up. And even, I mean, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, you see, you offer summer school for four weeks, eight weeks, twelve weeks, whatever it is, can you make up for ten months of not doing what, you know, what needed to be done? So we've got, we've got, schools across the nation have a huge uphill climb for, for some students, making sure that we're trying to address that.
And then we have attendance, oh, I'm sorry.
Was there a push, was there a push to students and families that you know, um, weren't logging in and, and was there a push to get them to, to go back in person?
Yeah, like, could you give us what you, I, I just, um, piggybacking, I, okay, so I'm a parent and you call me, and I say, I don't care if my kid calls, logs on, it's, I don't care, so how do you handle that?
We let the teachers talk, we let the teachers call them first, and we just talk about their academics and how far they're falling behind, and we really try to sympathize, we don't, we don't wanna pull the hammer down on, on parents, but we also wanna let them know how much their, their students are just falling behind. Most parents are receptive to listening to us, right now, what we're getting some of is that fear. And we say, okay, we understand that there's fear, but then you have to do X, Y, Z, you have to log on at least seventy-five percent of the time, you have to do this much of the work, if you need me to log on and help you, we can do that, you know, our teachers have bent over backwards. Teachers are calling, counselors are calling and talking to people, administrators are calling, I mean, we have everybody, and there's logs of just parents after parents after parents that everybody is trying to call and get kids back engaged in the learning.
So when does that hammer come down, we're talking about, you know, tremendous loss, and so when does our hammer come down?
In all honesty, the hammer has come down, we have sent out, um, uh, retention letters, they usually go home in, in January, that, the letters that say, your child is in danger of being retained because of this, this, and this. And we sent, honestly, hundreds of retention letters home K eight, because we had to, I mean, we, we just absolutely had to, and we had to let parents know, this is serious, we will do absolutely everything we can to help you, absolutely everything we can, but this is.
And what kind of response have you got from that letter, or is it too early?
It's, well, they just went out a couple of weeks ago, but we are, that is one thing that does, unfortunately, I hate to use the scare tactics, but it does get us a response, where, okay, this is, this is serious. It says, according to board policy, five oh four point, blah, 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 this, you know, your child could be retained because lack of progress, lack of attendance, lack, I mean, that's, and so that's what, um, the administrators, especially K eight, have really been working on is, is getting those, those families back if we can.
Well, and I'm a total advocate of that, because the, the cur, you know, their learning curve is just gonna get worse and worse if we just keep letting it go.
It's not for a punishment, it's for our own kids, it's that we have to do, do this for our kids.
But aren't there legalities as well, I mean, if they're not attending school?
Right, cause we technically could arrest, have, true, and have arrests made.
When I worked at the detention center, that's what some of our kids were.
So is there an argument to go like to two and a half, three and a half grades, uh, that are more, uh, organized to diagnose and prescribe what the kids are specifically missing, you know, this next year, so, so rather than just say, okay, you're in second grade again, and you're gonna go through this, this, uh, litany of lesson plans, uh, that'd be a little more customized, cause some of these kids probably know some of it, but if we don't know what they don't know, so it just seems like maybe you get not, not retained at second grade, but you go to two and a half, and, uh,
Interesting.
And you diagnose and prescribe more, more targeted.
That has been on the table, that, we have talked about that, we have absolutely talked about that.
There, there's a name for that, we, we actually were meeting with the principals, and, and they can call them, um, transition grades, and so it is kind of a one and a half, so the first part of the year can be, you know, finishing up some first grade materials and then starting second grade, um, a two and a half, a three and a half, so that, that actually, I was smiling as you were saying that, cause I'm like, that was just what we were talking about at our last meeting, that they, I, I didn't hear it called a half grade, but they've called it a, a transition classroom. Um, and we have something similar like that right now currently in Waterloo, where we have a, like, an eight and a half, we have a Bridges program, so Bridges eighth grade to ninth grade for students who aren't quite ready to go on to ninth grade, and we've, we're worried about, you know, the, the success, and especially at ninth grade where those credits start, so we've done that before, and that whole concept has, you know, has been fairly successful, and so we were talking with the elementary principals about what that might look like at a kindergarten and a half, you know, at a, what would that look like, where the, part of it? Um, the question is that, you know, Dr. Mohorn and her team will have to really look at is, at, at the end of, you know, what does that first semester look like, is it, let's say it's, it's between first and second grade, is the first semester all first grade content, and then the second semester is second grade content? Then what happens in the fall, are they ready to go on to third grade, or where would they be? So, um, there's a, there's a lot of work and trying to figure that out.
I mean, you're gonna have differentiated instruction, and some of these kids are gonna be able to advance, and the other ones, you know, into a full fourth grade, and the other ones are, are not, they're gonna be back in third, you know, for another year, so I think, I think with that transition year, some of them are gonna go.
It depends on where they were at before, before they left, if they were a little bit ahead, then they might not be as far behind.
Yeah, so I think it's gonna, some are gonna go each way, I would guess.
It will be the individual education plan for those students, Lyle, there you go.
It only took a pandemic to get that to happen, Lyle.
So, I'm sorry, so for, for six to eight, do we do, um, anything like PBDA so that those kids could come in, and you can just nail them right away and get them moving to get them up to grade level? I, I know that that really wouldn't be something that would probably help as much with K through five, but.
We've done some experimenting with, um, online even before, even before the pand- pandemic, with individual students at individual schools, where we've tried, okay, this student really needs to do, um, no, I can't even think, edgenuity for eighth grade literacy, let's see if this works, and so we did experiment with that to see what would work for kids.
Did it help at all?
It did help, it did help for small, but we're also looking at doing it on a larger scale for summer school again.
Okay.
For this, for six through eight, cause it seems to be definitely beneficial for our older kids, for our six through twelve.
Right.
That's where we've seen success in the past.
Okay.
And so we just have to figure out, how do we duplicate that success in our elementary grades as well?
You're doing a lot, Steph, thank you, this is.
We're trying, we are trying, we are trying.
I actually have a question, I think it's for Kingsley, as far as how the staff, he, how you feel the overall, overall view of staff is having back full-time?
Yeah, I think staff are concerned, um, in general, it's a change, um, they've been in an AB for the entire year, and so they have, they have shared their concerns, so we walked through a pretty deliberate process where we took the information from the staff survey that we sent out, um, we walked through their building, respective building I L Ts, or the principals walked through their building I L Ts, um, and then, you know, Andy at West did a really good job of having a parking lot of questions where he really addressed all the questions, and had an opportunity to look through those and, you know, answered it, um, really, really well. And then we actually spent some time with a task force at East, um, to walk through, uh, some of the survey responses that they got after they had all staff meetings, and so there was a, a documented timeline and process that we wanted to make sure we engage staff at a high level to address many of the concerns, uh, but we haven't heard a lot from staff, I mean, not to say that, you know, they have to tell us everything about their, how they're feeling, but we generally know their concerns, but we also feel like they're being addressed as we're walking through this process.
So is there a vaccine schedule at this point?
Um, not yet, uh, we know, I think this was out not too long ago, that, you know, we'll be within the window of February fifteenth and April fifteenth, right, Jane?
That's the hope.
Yeah, that's the hope, and so, well, we, we did get some information from the, our Department of Public Health on Friday in regards to, you know, vials will be sent, um, again, beginning February first, and our hope is that, that will start to hit the tier one B that we are currently in, that's, um, age over sixty-five and, um, you know, school staff, um, but there's not a lot of information at this time about how much that will be, how much each county will get, um, when we will get that information, but we were working diligently, we're working with our, uh, nurse practitioner in the clinic, um, to know, you know, as soon as we get the information, we have a variety of different options that we can move forward on pretty quickly, um, to make sure that our staff get vaccinated as soon as possible.
So is it, uh, your intent to organize the, the staff to get the shots? That seems to be a, one of the big stumbling blocks is, they're unable to get the right group of people together to give a mass.
That's what, that's what our, that's what our task is gonna be, so it's gonna be fun.
So our list is?
We already had, I think, Lyle, you remember, we already have our staff, matter of fact, I believe they have about four more days to make their decisions, so we put that out on, gosh, I don't know what day, twelfth of January, eleventh?
Just the day of the last board meeting.
Okay, yep, eleventh, so, yep, so they had that, and, and they have until the twenty-ninth to sign up. I haven't looked at it today, but it's running really, really high as far as the percentage of staff who.
Was it ninety-five, I think you said?
It was ninety-five at the last time, I haven't looked at it over the last, probably, over a week, but.
Does that include bus drivers and?
Correct, includes bus drivers, coaches, um, yeah.
What percentage of those, um, that were surveyed last, at the last board meeting, meet that one B, that sixty-five?
All of them.
All of them?
All of them, yeah.
So I think you said they had like forty percent responses in the first day or something like that.
Yeah, we were up to twelve hundred, weren't we, within just a, out of the sixteen, seventeen hundreds, so.
And it's still running ninety percent?
I was trying to pull it up, but I can't remember my password on this computer.
I can let y'all know as soon as I can get back to it, what that is, but, um.
Cause the first ones, you would expect them to be the highest percentage, cause they're gonna get right on and say, I want it.
Well, since then, we've also tried to send out additional communication from Unity Point, which is a, just a questionnaire, we've asked people to please reach out to their PCP, their primary care provider, just to make sure that they're doing what they need to do from that standpoint, but Unity Point also provided us with a document that really answers a lot of questions around, hey, I'm pregnant, uh, what about this vaccine? And so it was pretty comprehensive and, you know, at least addressing some initial questions, but again, we wanted to reach, have them reach out to the primary care provider and, uh, reach out to our, um, nurse practitioner if they have questions as well.
So where will it be administered?
We haven't decided that yet, we have three different options as far as what we're. We haven't decided that yet, we have three different options as far as what we're looking at, we're looking at either at the building, um, certain locations, or five locations that are central locations, or the clinic.
We have been told by Blackout County that it is not as easy to administer and to plan for as the flu shot is. Because the flu shot, you, you technically put the vaccines in your bag and you go to wherever you wanna go, but there's, there's a lot more stipulations and. The temperature and that kind of thing, and so they have said that they are pretty sure that they will limit the number of places where we do vaccinate our staff. So it could be, you know, a couple of buildings, um, you know, in one area town, you know, one in Evansdale, one out here, and the clinic. I mean, tho- that's just an idea, we don't, we don't know for sure, but we do know that our clinic has been approved to be a vaccination site, so, yeah.
And we also know that our staff, those hours in which they can get the shot will be at, at a time when they can get there, right? Because it doesn't do any good to give a teacher, a classroom teacher, a ten o'clock AM slot that they can't leave.
That and we want to make sure that we're prepared with thinking through, you know, hey, if there's some adverse side effects afterwards, that we plan it in a way that allows for the staff member to have coverage or.
Or coverage to, for that person to get their shot, so that, you know, I know that's a logistical nightmare that I'm speaking about.
Calling on all of you to potentially help us out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the clinic person can travel?
Yes.
And administer?
Yes.
The shot?
Yes.
Problems half solved.
Let's hope so.
And what if they don't come back for their second shot, they'll be pestering and?
Yeah, that's, I don't have an answer to that question yet, I mean, we, we're just trying to make sure we get the initial, um, the initial shot to our folks. Um, again, there's, as, in the same question you asked about concerns about the transition, there's some concerns about, obviously, as you can hear nationwide, about, you know, vaccine, whether I should or shouldn't take it. So we're, we're gonna work through those details as we get to it.
So your department has no medical records on people?
As far as, like, the general medical records that they share with us, yes, but we don't have, you know, detailed medical records that they share with their primary care provider, no.
But, A medic, I mean, every kid supposedly has a medical record, that they've been vaccinated or whatever, right?
Immunization for legally required immunizations, yes.
We have.
You get your, you'll get a card.
So, does staff have this, does staff have a card?
Right now, no.
There are certain things that we have, though, we have to do a physical when we come and we have to, you know, TV tests and those kind of things, yeah.
Database there.
Correct.
Yeah.
I wanna be careful, though, because when we talk about, you know, what we have or what we require for our employees to do before they work with us, is different than.
I'm just thinking of the file, because if there's a file there, then you can easily put in who got it and.
Yeah.
Who needs the next one and didn't get it yet. As long as the file exists to begin with, it sounds like it does.
And what is the protocol that after you receive the first one, and maybe this is not a question for you, but um when you receive the first one? How long to go to get the second one versus the ineffectiveness of it?
Can't remember off the top of my head.
It's twenty-eight days.
Twenty-eight, one's forty-one.
Three weeks for the Pfizer, I think, and four week for Moderna.
So if you would go beyond that date, you would have to start over with the first vaccine?
No, there's a pretty wide, window keeps widening, they're now saying plus or minus ten days, I think.
Oh, I've heard up to twelve weeks, that sometimes.
No, just because I know a nurse at Allen that had the first shot, and then in a week she got, before she got her second shot, she got COVID. So it, you know, it's critical that people don't think the first shot is, you know, they don't need the second shot, because I think you need the second shot.
Well, we need to be careful that even when they do get it.
I can tell you, I'm, I'm looking at the survey right now, and of course, we will have some people who will, you know, take as long and, and um haven't logged in yet. But we're, we have one thousand four hundred ten staff members who have indicated their preference, yes or no, and we are running just, just below ninety-three percent. Yes, just under ninety-three percent, yes, so.
That will constitute herd immunity.
I mean, I do wanna be careful, Sue, about your question in general, I mean, one of the things that we wanna make sure we're paying attention to is, even when you get the vaccine, both doses. There's still a period of time where you're not currently immunized in the sense, and then even beyond that, we don't want people to, you know, not wear masks and follow all the protocols. Because that will still be in until we hear from Blacklock Public Health, it's no longer a pandemic.
We've still got a lot of protocols to follow even with the shot.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, um, is it okay, can we talk a little bit about some of the mitigation strategies that are gonna be used?
Absolutely, I asked Dr. Mohorn to come back up here and participate as well.
Um, and I had a couple of questions um from people who sent to me.
Yeah, shoot.
Uh, one, just staff, you know, being concerned, and this is one that you and I talked about, you know, if they, if we could just hold on for vaccines.
Yeah.
But it's just such a toss-up, um, the other is um making sure that our students, and that's why I asked you for the. The protocols of kids don't wear masks, because I think that um with all the extra kids. That already high level of anxiety is gonna, to shoot up, and I haven't heard that there's been a lot of non-compliance, is that, has it been an issue?
There hasn't, I mean, in, in general, you have students that, you know, all the time are, you know, look at the system and try to do things differently. I mean, that's in general, but I also would tell you that students have been incredibly resilient when it comes to this, and understand the gravity of what this looks like. So, you know, I, I, I don't see it as much as, you know, we look at behavior in the, in the past. It is, I get.
I understand their concern.
Yeah, and we wanna make sure that we're, we're differentiating between, you know, a student potentially dropping between their nose. Um, hey, can you make sure you put that back on, to somebody that is, you know, blatantly refusing to do it? You know, the nose thing happens all the time, but it also happens a ton with adults, and so we wanna make sure that we're modeling the same thing that we're asking our students to do as well. We've had those conversations with staff.
Um, hold on, let's see here, and then another was, oh, um, so out of the other U E N schools. How many of them are not returning their students full-time? Do they have hybrid options, or, I mean, I know like CF and Sioux City has always had all theirs together. But are there other schools that are staying hybrid or no?
Yeah, um, I'll have to check on that, because I'm not exactly sure right offhand, if you, yeah, I don't, I don't know that right now, that would just take me a moment. Obviously, we all know about Des Moines, um, Des Moines has been in the news, you know, from the very beginning and doing um a, a little bit different. But um Sioux City has been full-time, I believe Council Bluffs is back, um, they start, they started hybrid, but they're back. Yeah, I'm trying to think, Dubuque, yeah, I'm not exactly sure, I'd have to, I'd have to go in, into each one and look at that, I actually don't know that right now.
Iowa City came back for like a couple of days right before break, but I wasn't sure kind of whether or not that was an alternate schedule or not. Cedar Rapids, you have to remember, even though there was some, they did come back, at least in some way, shape or form, but, you know, they also were heavily impacted by the derecho as well. And so that was a part of them coming back and their buildings being destroyed, and whether or not they had, you know, facilities that kids, students can learn in.
Iowa City is back currently.
They're back currently now, okay, I just went, I knew that right before the break they did that, but I haven't touched base with anybody since then.
And then, um, thank you, you shared the, the AB transition to full-time mitigation strategies with me. And if, if you wanted to kind of go through those, I think that people would be very interested, I got a lot of questions about um, about the shields. Because a lot of parents who have kids in the younger grades, you know, they feel very comfortable with the shields. And some teachers from the younger grades, um, primarily the middle schools, so can we kind of walk through these?
Yeah, I can go through a brief overview.
Thank you.
No problem, in general, we have, um, we wanna make sure communication is, um, happens on a regular basis. And so I know that some of the schools have already sent out that communication to students um in regards to mask, hey, make, make sure we're. Wayne, Joe and Andy and I talked about it, was around, hey, we're treating this like the first day of school. You know, this is gonna be a resurgence of people coming back into a different environment, let's make sure we're on top of our, our mask wearing. Make sure people know the requirements and the rules, and so that's something that they're sending out. I know they sent out, I know that East especially sent out last week, I know that Andy has a plan of communication as well. Additional cleaning, uh, I think I've talked about, or at least, I know, we talked about, Stacy, uh, or Director Mills. There will be at least three additional custodial staff that will be at East and at West. Uh, one will be designated for the daytime to help with that additional cleaning or consistent cleaning. Two will be in the nighttime, just to make sure, because we have students coming back, that we haven't missed anything, that will help as well. And with the additional um desk shields, the desk shields in general are really hard to clean, um, and clean effectively. And so that's why the additional staff is needed. Uh, it's also to look at the lunchroom as well, that's another area that's um a, an area of concern that we want to address. That there's consistent cleaning happening at that time, um, individuals or students have always had the option of whether or not they could use the desk shield. Or have the option potentially to use the desk shield at lunch as well, um, as needed. It's a little bit better to, the issue with cleaning them in general, as you have a high school student that's walking throughout the building, is one of the concerns of why. They weren't utilized at the high school level, however, if we look at certain timeframes of the day that they can be utilized, such as lunch, and then put in a. I use the example of, I use, I love movies, I use the example of like three D glasses, you put three D glasses on for the movies, you take it off and dump it in the, and dump it in a little box. And they, you know, get cleaned in some way, shape or form, that's how we're gonna look at similar, um, the desk shield cleaning process as well.
Okay, just for a sec, we, when we had talked about this earlier in the year, um, I know that, that there's, was just so much going on. And I didn't speak to West, but, or to East, but at West, that, that there wasn't any way to give everybody one. And the suggestion, if your child wanted to carry one, is they had to take it out to their car um during the day, which not every kid.
Right.
Has a car, so my question though is, is, it says that they can be used. In the classrooms as well, so how, how would that work then? Are we going to let, have them walking through the building with them if they want them?
Yeah, they want them, that's a part of what our middle school students do right now, they walk through the building with them. The difference was, when you're looking about Hoover and, or, I'm using Hoover, because that's the one that comes to mind, or any of our middle schools, you know, it's. You're going from the sixth grade wing, the seventh grade wing, to lunch and then back, at high school, you could be walking across, you know.
Yep.
Yards and yards of football field's worth of, you know, um, space, and so that's a part of the consideration that went into that. I think additionally, with the desk shields, teachers are also requesting them for their class as well, and we wanted to make sure that we opened up the opportunity for people that had. Teachers or staff that had their concerns as well.
Um, are teachers gonna be given the option of having the face shield with the mask again too, or no?
That was an option, that's, or, that's always been an option.
Oh, it is, okay, sorry, okay.
And we provided those.
Yeah, you need to have a mask.
Everybody got masks and shields.
Right, you need to have a mask for sure, if you want to add the additional face shield, you can.
We'll, we'll provide it.
Yeah.
So if kid does wanna take a, a desk shield all day, are they gonna clean it at the end of the day and put it somewhere? Or do they just, like, like, okay, if my daughter, does she just like clean it at the end of the day and then go stick it in her first hour class, or what does she do?
That was a problem with kind of how we were in, we're gonna have to have like different places where they, those who get dropped off. So your daughter won't have the same desk shield um next day, but she can drop it off and have it cleaned by our team, and that's why we're adding the additional custodial staff. No, no, that's, that's, it means good questions. Okay, and then last, let me make sure I. Additional signage is another um thing that we're looking at as well, uh, increased monitoring during lunch. And so we wanna make sure that when we're having lunch, as you know, that's a, that's an area that in general, is just when students are unmasking. So making sure, hey, you're having lunch, and then as soon as you're done with lunch, you need to clean up your area and, and move on, and so additional supervision. We're gonna utilize our campus safety monitors to provide additional cleaning as well, and so you may see them with um the, a rag and a uh. A, a spray bottle, just as they're walking through the building, to provide additional level of cleaning, to just really help address some of the concerns. Um, you know, continual mask reminders, uh, and then one of the biggest things is looking at the hallways. So we wanna make sure we're having one way of traffic, hallways can be really tough, we're not allowing for the use of lockers, which should really help. We've seen it help in other ways as well, but that's gonna be a tremendous help to say, hey, you can't stick and stay at your locker, you need to move to your next class period. We are gonna watch and monitor to see how it goes first, we know that Hoover has actually removed their bell system, they go to a silent bell system to move kids around. It's a little bit different when you're talking about, you know, comprehensive high school, but if we need to move to that, we can. And so there's, what, what we talked about a little bit was, this is gonna be a. This is definitely gonna be a trying time as we think about a shift in environments, but in general, we've had a good plan with all of our buildings that have come back full-time. We're gonna work the plan, see how it goes and make transitions, and we hope that our staff, as they have been, have been vocal about their concerns and what we can change. Something that I plan on calling, or at least touching base with Andy and Joe on a regular basis, um, daily basis, just to see how it goes. And I, I also, when I was talking to Stacy, it would be a great thing, um, and to get a chance to tell Jane, but a great thing for a weekly update, just to give you, uh, hey, how did the first week go? What, what, um, what general concerns were there, um, was it, my, my hope is that it wouldn't be major concerns, but what, what general concerns were there? How were you able to address those changes and go from there?
Interesting, I don't think any of my secondary children have ever used a locker.
Oh, really?
Yeah. No, yeah.
My kids live in the band locker, so.
Band locker they use.
Yeah.
Yeah, band locker, but not their.
But I mean, if we're looking at this, uh, on the numbers that are in virtual right now, this is saying five hundred and fifteen high school students. So that's how many we're assimilating back into the building, except we're not doing AB day, so everyone would be there every day, is that correct?
The virtual kids pull out of the.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, but, so, what I'm saying is, how many more are we actually assimilating back into the buildings?
So we're looking at approximately, probably six hundred or so for East as they come back in? With their virtual numbers out? Or was it, was it seven?
Six, yeah, it's, for West, there's seventeen hundred kids and probably three hundred and some are on virtual. And another hundred are gone at W C C at a time, and so they probably have, yeah, about six hundred, probably.
About East?
Uh, East would be three fifty, probably.
Yeah.
Three fifty, East is probably coming back in addition, yeah. Because there's, there's about seven hundred, six hundred and fifty kids at West at a time right now, so the other half would be coming back, so they'd be there together.
Fifty.
Yeah.
Right. I was talking about, but for East though, I thought we were saying for in-person, what were we looking at?
Sounds like thirteen fifty at West.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, but for East, we're looking at.
Another three fifty or four, there, there's about six, seven hundred kids in person, doing in-person learning, and half of them are at it, there at a time. So now they'll all be there.
Still nowhere near capacity of the building.
No, 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 it's not, it, yeah.
No, but you're going from about forty-three percent up to um eighty-five percent.
And it'll vary a little bit by classroom and stuff like that, some classes, you know, you pull them back full-time, they're not gonna be very big anyway.
Well, like, Kingsley had said, though, when, if there were some that were gonna be like thirty, but he whittled them down, going back to full-time.
Or divide them into a second section, or.
I think the lunchroom is really the biggest cause of concern.
Yeah, I would agree.
And we have some lessons learned in general, I mean, that's why I was trying to, I'm not, I was not capturing kind of the numbers conversation, I may be off. But right now, basically, it was East is gonna be lower than Hoover currently, so there's gonna be some lessons learned from Hoover right now that we can definitely apply to East. West is a different problem, I think, as you articulated, as far as, it's just a, a larger number of students that come back, but it's not at capacity. And so there's still some things that we can do, additionally.
The hallways are bigger and the cafeteria is larger and square footage.
The halls at East and West are huge, you know.
Additionally, one of the things that came up, that was a major concern for our teachers, is definitely the task force, was class sizes. And that, you know, when we were thinking about bringing students back at that level, you know, you're looking at students at thirty or thirty-five, not all classes. But maybe ten to fifteen to twenty percent of classes, but, you know, um, Steve Winters and Josh Payton and their teams have done a wonderful job of paring down that number. I think Stephanie looked at it Friday, and there's only one or two classes that were up there, and they're still working on it, you know, daily to figure out how we can put that down.
Yeah, they've really done a good job of evening out the sections, at the, in the first semester, they really didn't necessarily need to do that. Because they only had half of the students, so even if, you know, let's say it was a class of thirty-six and they only had half of the kids there, they didn't really worry about it. Because some of those rooms were really big, but, but now with everybody coming back, they were, they said, second semester, we really have to make sure. So they, I know that the schedulers, Josh Payton and, and Steve Winters spent a, a lot of time making sure that they evened those out. And um, I'm, for example, one of them was, for second semester was scheduled to be thirty-eight, and just by looking at the other sections and moving kids around. It was down to twenty-two as a high, so, you know, that, that's good.
And Stephanie said they don't have any thirties at, at any of the buildings.
They've really done a great job, thanks for looking at that.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you, interesting, just from uh, some interesting feedback I got from my own daughter on AB, my oldest daughter. Was, she liked it because it, she liked it because it prepped her for college.
Hmm, interesting.
I've, just to her perspective, you know, it got me into my uh, how college is gonna be like, and how to manage my time in the, when I'm not in class. So I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I, I would say, I mean, I, I think there were some positives that came out of the AB, I mean, first of all, it allowed us to get to this point. I think um, the, the one thing, let's be clear, there were a lot of negatives that came out of it, our, our, you know, grades are, are, are tough. And, and um, and I know students, some students said, well, I was able to work every other day, and I was able to go, and I, I. And I know students, some students said, well, I was able to work every other day and I was able to go and I, I get that. I mean, I, I get that. They were earning money and. You know, doing those things, but.
Well, and a huge kudos to our teachers because the level of content that they have to push through to make sure. That there's some modicum of transition has been insurmountable. And so this will, again. We obviously know COVID, COVID nineteen is a bear. This is a serious issue. But this will help alleviate some of the stress that our teachers are feeling in regards to, you know, the instructional piece as well.
Would we have an option for students like Stacy was saying, having a lot of anxiety potentially going into the lunchroom with that many people that. They could stay in their classrooms and bring their own lunch and eat in their classrooms?
Yeah, we wanna see what that looks like. Hoover has had situations similar to that and they've just find different, found different areas in which um they could have students do it. And so. With the size of Hoover and the size of some of the buildings, we could definitely figure it out. We still are working through those options, you know. Looking at uh the East upper gym level to have an overflow of students. And so there's still those options being worked out.
West High is that little gym too.
Yep.
Yep.
So I think you said they're eliminate, they eliminated bells at Hoover?
Correct. Just went to a silent bell schedule when they're moving students.
Is that, so it's not a hard?
So you can move a different grade at, you know, somebody moves at five, yeah.
So there's like a, you know, three, four minute passing period. And so this class lets their kids go at that and then thirty seconds later, somebody else goes and whatever. And so they.
What we were trying to do initially, especially with the middle schools, was to ensure that grade levels stayed connected. That's a little bit different at um high school because you have heterogeneous populations from ninth to twelfth grade. So that was why it was, that's why that's happened at Hoover. In the middle school and not at the high school level.
But we kinda did create cohorts and that's, that's my really only other big concern is we did create four separate cohorts. And now. We're combining them into two and um, and I knew, I mean, uh it has to happen at some point, but. It's kind of what you're talking about. Let's keep six, seven and eight. So then we can kind of make sure if there's a kid sick here, well, at least it's within this cohort. Um and so now we're, we're losing that and um. Personally, I don't know, I, I, I don't feel comfortable at this time, but it's not my decision to make. Um but I represent people who feel the same way I do, so.
Well, and like I told you, I think, yeah, on the phone, I was gonna say, I didn't see until now, um you know, we're also overly cautious. You know, I think in general, our principals and I talked to you about. Also the pride element of, you know, we've been touted out in a couple of districts that have reached out to me as far as having really good mitigation strategies. Pridefully, I don't wanna lose that, but then also from a staff standpoint, it's been, it, it's been good to know that we've been able to keep the engine going. And so. Any deviation from that, Jane knows I'm gonna lose my mind just to make sure that, hey, we can't, we can't stop. We have to make sure. And we have to make sure our staff and students are safe. So we're gonna, I mean, like, next week is gonna be tough. I mean, I'm, I know where I'm gonna be.
In a way, it kinda feels like it's August again because those apprehensions and that, that responsibility that we feel. I, I remembered thinking in August, oh my gosh, I just don't know that I can even bear this. It's just a lot of responsibility and I feel that same thing and I. And I empathize with the staff at the, at East and West because they feel it too, you know, so. Um and, and some of our other bigger buildings, you know, they're, they're not the only buildings that have a lot of kids. And so it's um, yeah. I mean, it's, we're taking it very seriously.
Would it be a hot mess to kinda do the staggered starting next week like we did at the beginning of the school year?
It would.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, just because. Well, I didn't mean to say hot mess, but I just mean, it, it just would be, yeah, it just would be a lot. Um based on the efforts that we're putting in, we gotta, it's built for having the students come back at the same time. Um but again, we're, you know, we're trying to be, we're gonna be flexible. We're gonna look at the situation and continually address concerns and go from there.
And if a student did have, you know, bad anxiety attack because all these kids were there. Would they have the option to go virtual?
Yeah, we've talked about medical exemptions and things along those lines on a case by case basis for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I wanna get back to just, I, I hear you with the concerns, but I also, the other concern that I weigh. Is what it's doing to our kids to not be in school every day. And I hear it, I see it from the. Organizations in our community that reach out, especially to some students who may not, who may not have all the supports. And it, they're really falling behind. And I think Jane, you said it best about our, our grades are suffering and. Um, learning is suffering. And so I give huge props to our staff and our, our, for. I, I know our teachers have some anxiety and our administrators do. I know.
And that's, and just so, just so you know as well, because I, I think sometimes it comes out because we're coming here presenting in front of you that it's, you know, just our message as far as. Why the educational loss and the concerns around that. Our teachers are concerned. That came through very clearly in the survey that. Our teachers are concerned about how our students will, will work through this, will see, um you know, not only at the end of this year, but as they transition to next year as well. And so. They're also trying to battle with this dichotomy of ha- having, wanting to have a safe environment, but also wanting to make sure our students are learning at a high level. We're gonna try to hit that balance and make sure that we're doing both well.
Well, and, and Jane and I had also spoke about the emotional, social and um impact of kids not.
Being isolated.
Yes, and for some kids, I, it's, that is more scary than getting sick.
Yep. The pandemic has, has, has challenged us to. New levels that we hope we never have to do again. And, but I will say I am extremely proud of the work that has gone into. The, the work that we've talked about today, but even just since the ver- very beginning because there's really. There's nothing logical about what we're doing right now. I mean, it's, it's, that we shouldn't have to do this. I mean, it's just not a logical thing that they prepare you for and say, okay. Well, when this happens, I mean, it's just not a logical, you know, and, and what we've taken is something that is just extraordinary and tried to put logic to it. And make it happen. And I feel like it has been a really strong concerted effort and I'm super proud of the work that we've done, but I. Hope we never have to do it again.
Taken by steps, you know, we, we start February, we hit the spring break.
That's right, absolutely. Exactly. And we stand ready to modify. I mean, we've said that when we met with the staff, we said, you know, we're. We're gonna be monitoring this like every day, every hour. And so we're gonna be watching it on Monday. I mean, we're gonna be. Checking out the buildings, talking about numbers and, and making decisions as we go. So there's nothing that says, you know, just like when we started school in August, we didn't. You know, we stood ready to, to morph and adjust as we needed to and, and that same thing, yeah. And we did. And they will do that same thing again. So we, you know, we, the safety's important and learning is important and it, it, there is, you know.
Will you please um keep us posted? I know you mentioned that this would be a possibility to have in our weekly update.
Yeah, they will.
At the end because before, before our next meeting, just to see.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate that. We all would, so. Okay. Thank you.
Cool.
All right, with that, I can turn it over to Dr. Lindeman. We probably stepped on half your lines.
Yep, I just have two things. So first of all, um Shanley actually asked me to, I was gonna talk a little bit about the weather. I don't know what it's doing outside, but. As most people know, we're supposed to get a little snow. So just a couple of things to anyone who's uh watching or will watch later. Um. We, we um, we check out the weather, you know, when we know that this is gonna happen. We will be out. Bright and early, probably four o'clock in the morning. We have a group of people. I don't usually join them at four, but I'll be out there by a quarter to five for sure. And uh we take a look at, you know, what's going on and we make some judgments on that. And so um, you know, I hope people will have confidence that we will. We will be driving all over the city and, and, you know, making sure that we're making responsible decisions. Um as far as, you know, and I'm not sharing anything about whether we have a snow day tomorrow or not, and, and but we'll see. Um my hope is that we don't. And if we had to utilize a two-hour late start or something, that would be my preference, but you know, we'll wait and see. But there are two days written in the calendar as far as snow days and they are April fifth and May seventh. Those are days already in the calendar. They're already scheduled to either be a snow day or a uh no school day. So. Um we will utilize those two snow days before we do anything else. So people have said, if we don't have school tomorrow, will it be virtual? No. It will not be virtual tomorrow to, because we haven't had any snow days, knock on wood. Um if we miss school tomorrow. Again, not sharing, I'm not choreographing anything, I'm not signaling anything, but if we miss school tomorrow, that day would be made up on April fifth. If we miss another day later, then that day would be made up on May seventh. And then if we miss a third day, that day would be added on to the end of the year. Because it would still, it doesn't push us into that next week. Then on, on a fourth day, we would be um, we would add on. Uh we would do virtual on a fourth day if we happen to miss, miss a fourth day, but.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It will not be virtual tomorrow if there happens to be.
I've had a lot of parents ask me about that. So thank you for that clarification.
Tara, that'd be a great thing maybe to put out too.
Yep, we'll, we'll stand ready to correct, to uh, if, if we happen to have a snow day tomorrow and we're, we're monitoring um. The last I heard, you know, they're saying four to six inches is what I heard at noon today. And so. Uh the winds, of course, are gonna be an issue, so we'll pay attention.
That, that, does it, does it affect A B or right this other thing?
Uh no, it wouldn't because that, that day is just a no school day. And so it'd be like a Saturday, right? There's no school and so then, oh, tomorrow, right.
So like if you were A tomorrow and you miss, you would still, would that impact?
Will go the next day.
Yeah, B will go the next day.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, but A kids have realized that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question, right.
Make sure the A kids know that you're still on your schedule.
Right.
Until next week.
That's it. Oh, no, I did have one more. Legislation. I said I had two things. I only did weather. Um legislation right now, I, I hope anybody who's, who's watching this is kinda keeping an eye on the legislation that's happening in the. The Capitol. There was a, the governor's education bill came out and um, there is a lot. Um in there and, and some of it will significantly change the way that we do business. And so I hope people are watching that. It happens to be Senate study bill ten sixty-five. And I have read it in its entirety and it did pass, uh it passed subcommittee and today it passed the education committee. And so it will go to uh I think ways and means and appropriations and then we'll go to the House floor, which is actually helpful. Because it'll give us a little more time to talk about that. And, and so uh call legislators. I actually called today and left messages with three legislators. Who will hopefully call me back tomorrow. And so um, you know, go to the, the um Iowa legislate, legislative page. Look up the people who represent you and um make some phone calls. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Lyle, you weren't here at our last meeting. And so I'm gonna start, I'm gonna pick on you and start with you tonight for director comments.
Yeah, I just got two comments. One, I'm glad to see that we're uh, uh now offering full-time. Uh in-person option and a virtual option to all kids. I think that's, that's the best. Mix and appreciate everybody, like you said, everybody's effort and, and going to full-time and hopefully that will be successful. At the high school level. And the, next one is just a comment on a change in policy on the subpay. I think that was a good change. Uh it's more sustainable than a critical need uh. Uh model that, that we had previously. So I was glad to see that. Good job, Kingsley.
Thanks. So, okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Stacy.
Uh I just wanted to say I got a chance to go visit Matt O'Brien at the tech center. Um last week and it was so fun and he was so excited to show me the, his baby, the room with all the cool stuff in it and. It was, it was, it was exciting, I do have to say. Um and that is one dedicated young man. Like we are so lucky to have this homegrown East grad who. Who knows everything there is to know and uh, like I said, gets us deals too. So. Um it, it was very, it was very impressive and I'm really glad that I got to go. Um I get to go see uh. Uh Principal Parker this week at East and then I think the week after I get to go watch Tara at Success Street. So. It's nice to finally be getting back into meeting people. I've been doing this for over a year and I still haven't met most of the principals. So, anyway, thank you.
Aster, sorry.
Just as we talked about earlier, um as we start the second semester, uh just engaging. With your students um and their learning, making sure uh as parents, uh community members. Um that students are, are, if they are virtual, logging in, uh. Um just push, I know this is unprecedented times. We're almost a year into, you know, what we. Are know, are now knowing as a norm. Uh so just, you know, if you, if you know any students. Um have conversations with them, have conversations with their parents, um just making sure they're engaging and they're learning. So. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sue?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate the West High Girls Basketball Team. I went to the game the other night and they um swept. Cedar Falls Tigers this year for two games. They beat them both, so that was pretty exciting. Um and also um the crowd was very um segregated. And I thought they did a good job of um trying to social distance and um keep things safe at that game. So. Um you miss the pep band, you know, things that you miss, that you go to games and you miss, but. Um maybe next year, but, and just um a word to our staff and to um. Um our whole community that grace is a good thing. And there's so much going on in our community and lots of different things besides COVID. And um just um remember grace. That's it.
Thanks, Sue. Jesse?
All right, I have two things. One, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be above line on this and this. And we talked about all the challenges we've had and stuff, but in the semester one, you look back, you know. For the kids who are able to take advantage of it, we had some very good opportunities. You know, you look at some of the schools, the kids lost, totally lost their athletics. We worked around it. We tried to give them the best we could. We've, you know, offered the in-school learning, you know, the things that we did. I think, you know, all the efforts the staff did to accomplish those and give the students, you know, this moment. Some of them, that either seniors would be their last moments and give them the best they could. I mean, it probably wasn't perfect for all of their situation, but. You know, it was, I felt we did a pretty good job of what we could. So I just thank all the staff and. Your staffs, teachers and administrators that helped provide the students with, you know, some level of engagement this, my semester. And then um on the other side, uh this last weekend, I had the opportunity to go down to the Iowa Girls State Wrestling Tournament, which. Unfortunately is not sanctioned yet. Uh there was four hundred and sixty girls participating. And I, that number for Waterloo, we had a total of five girls, four from West, one from East, which if you go back for, three years ago, we had one girl. So we've grown, but we really need the uh Girls Union to step up and sanction that sport cause it is growing. And there's lots of opportunities for females at the next level if we get there. But until we get there, we can't. So, Girls Union, get it done. Come.
There's actual criteria already in place to be sanctioned for any sport, isn't there? Number of schools and number, I thought there was. I thought there was, there was a litany of things that you had to meet in order to.
I, I think they've already, I think most of them have met it. At least they've offered some levels, so. We can do some research.
That was my impression at least. And I think we were getting close to like number of, you know.
Yeah, but there's gotta be other things like trap shoot because they have like fifty, sixty kids, but they're not sanctioned either.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there has to be the number of schools I think also involved and, I don't know.
We'll check it out. I just have two quick things. Jesse, are you finished? Um when, Sue, when you mentioned basketball, I think we should uh just take a minute to congratulate Dr. Tony Pappas. On his six-hundredth career win as a, as a coach. Wow, that's pretty amazing. He's been here a long time.
I believe he's one of fourteen. Is that what I asked? Is that right?
Yeah.
One of fourteen, I think.
Pretty uh small.
Fourteen total in the, yeah.
One of sixteen, okay. I knew it was not very many. Yes, so congratulations to him. And then as we talk about teaching, I just wanna put a little plug in for the McRory Trust and K W W L. Has started um once again, it's accepting nominations for the Gold Star Teacher Award. Um that you can go to goldstarteacher.com, you can nominate any teacher in Black Hawk County. Um and uh this nomination is a pretty easy process to do online. And I just wanna say that this, if there's a year more than any to honor our teaches, teachers and teaching staff, it would be this year. So um if you have any questions about that, you can ping me personally and I'll let you know. But is there anything further to come before the board? All right, then everybody be safe. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Aster and Sue. Second, and we are adjourned.